Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Click, click, click. And welcome to the July 18th, 2023 Planning Commission Work Session with the Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Adamo.
Yeah. And we have to have the opening of the meeting by, um, did we take Gary, Mr. Bunty? Mr. Bunty, do we need to, uh, attend to this?
Uh, you can do.
Roca is welcome. Okay. Roca, Ms. Jackson, Roca.
Okay. I will now confirm that all members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Jiggett, Commissioner Thaxton.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Page, Commissioner Hines.
Here.
All members of the Planning Commission are present.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you all to this very important work session joint meeting today, Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, being held in the City Council Conference Room. Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I will now confirm that all members of the Board of Zoning Appeals are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Gary Bunty.
Here.
Curtis Gunn.
Present.
Jasmine Fields. Danielle LaRue.
Present.
Sandra Boone.
Present.
There are four members of the Board of Zoning Appeals present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. A couple of months ago, I received a letter, uh, that had concerns from the Board of Zoning Appeals. I responded to that letter, and I thought everything was fine. And then, Mr. Bunty appeared before the City Council, reading that letter, and it was a lot of discussion about it. And during the discussion, several council members suggested maybe a joint meeting. And so I thought, we only have one, uh, item on agenda, so let's have this joint meeting and give the Board of Zoning Appeals the opportunity to lay out their concerns about variances. So to make sure that we had some type of talking point, I put together a little package about the number of cases to be reviewed, the function of the board of variances, and the mission requirement for various districts, so that we have something to talk about. But the focus is on variances and the Board of Zoning Appeals' concerns. So, Mr. Bunty.
All right. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I think all of the Planning Commission members received the letter that I wrote. The primary issue that we've had over the past several years, as you could see from the list of variance requests we've had, is that as the current zoning ordinance stands without a variance, um, many of the neighborhoods, especially the older neighborhoods, were originally platted with lots that are 25 feet to 30 feet in width. The current minimum side setback is seven feet. Now, that can be reduced to five feet under specific circumstances. But if it can't be reduced on a 25-foot lot, that means you can only build a house that's 11 feet wide, which is not feasible to economically, and it's just not attractive to buyers. And even if they can reduce it, you're still only talking about a 15-foot wide house, which is still fairly narrow. And the issue really comes down to the fact that without some accommodation, these lots that are sprinkled all through the older neighborhoods, primarily Prentice Park, Brighton, Ebony Heights,
Brighton.
I'm sorry.
Brighton.
Brighton, yeah. And a couple of other neighborhoods. West Park View was laid out that way as well, although we haven't had any requests. West Park View, the lots were originally 30 feet. But without some accommodation, these lots are basically non-buildable. There's, they're useless properties. And because of that, in a lot of cases, they wind up, number one, they're, the property owners, who in many cases are the owners, the families that have owned them, you know, for a number of years, or whoever's bought them, um, their value, the value is very, is almost, is almost nil, or very low, unless you can sell it to a property owner on one side. And because of that, the property owners have no incentive to keep maintaining the lot, so you wind up with, if you look at a lot of these that we've had variance requests for, neighbors or whoever have parked junk cars on them, or they're just trash on them, or they're overgrown, and, and in a lot of cases, and this doesn't, is not directly with the variances that I've seen, but a lot of them wind up coming up as tax sales because the property owners, they just don't, you know, there's, they don't see any point in paying taxes on something that they can't do anything with it. So you wind up seeing them on tax sales. So that's what we're trying to address. So I guess I'll be happy to answer any questions, or my fellow board members hopefully can support me in that, but we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
And I'd like to offer that, although we didn't address it in our letter, but it's, as Mr. Chairman has mentioned, many of these small lots or narrow lots are in minority neighborhoods, and they're hand-me-down, and the people are not able to buy the property next door, but there are several of them in the minority neighborhoods, such as you've mentioned, Brighton, Prentice Park, uh, some of these other areas, which is largely, uh, minority in those areas. And it presents a handicap for them trying to build, particularly, it may stay with a single-family home, or just a single-family home, but a lot of them want to go duplexes as well.
And another neighborhood that I just happened to think of is Mount Herman is a similar situation, too. They were platted at 25-foot lots.
Ms. Chairman, any questions?
Yeah, actually, first, I want to thank Mr. Bunty for taking my phone call yesterday, because we actually had a conversation surrounding some of this packet that was sent. And, um, on the surface, it looks like it's a great idea, but when you look at the data, it was, it's fairly confusing for people, for us to say, okay, let's go from seven to three. That's a pretty straightforward request. You know, when you first hear that read out loud at the council meeting, it's like, okay, sure. Then you get the data here, and the data is, you know, out of 26, 11 of them have been denied by you guys, for whatever reason. You know, woke up on the wrong side of bed, neighborhood was against, whatever the case may be. But without the context of the conversation I had with Mr. Bunty, that there may be a feeling that there isn't appropriate leadway in your powers, or that you don't want to set a precedent against the current zoning ordinance, that very well may be the reasoning behind the reason for so many denials. But naturally, after I saw all these denials, I said, well, why would I want to allow you to go from seven to three without having, you know, an understanding of the reason for all the denials? You know, if you say, okay, yeah, let's go seven to three, staff is going to jump on it and say, sure, no problem, because the ordinance allows. But, you know, without knowing the reason for the denials, you know, 40% denial rate makes you kind of stop and say, why? You know, so I'm glad that we were able to have a conversation about that. I, I, I don't have any real issue of giving some, some leadway here, but I do have concern of the amount of denials that have kind of taken place, many of which are 5-0 denials. You know, so, um, you know, I, I think when those types of things do come up, I think they're, you know, having context, and I would be saying that context is king. You know, without that, it makes it real difficult for that to kind of speak for itself.
If you don't mind, I'll be glad to answer that, and I'll kind of repeat what I said in our phone call, so everybody can have it and it can be on the record. In the, um, state code that mandates the powers and duties of Board of Zoning Appeals, there are a number of requirements that are necessary in order to, for a Board of Zoning Appeals to give a variance. The first is there has to be a hardship, which in this case, in my opinion, there is a hardship. The hardship is because of the size of the lot and the current zoning ordinance, there's basically no use for the property. So that is a hardship based on the, the property. But there are five other requirements that are, um, that are required in order for us to give a variance. And these are specified in the code in 15 dot two, 2309. It has to be acquired in good faith. The hardship cannot be created by the applicant. I'm going to skip number three, but number four is granting of the variance does not result in a use that's otherwise permitted. In other words, we can't give a variance on a residential property for somebody to put a business. You know, it has to be a use. And it cannot be, um, it cannot be detrimental to the neighborhood. But the one that's key here is, is item three says, "The condition or situation of the property concerned is not of so general or recurring in nature as to make reasonably practical the formulation of a general regulation to be adopted as an amendment to the ordinance." So if it's something that is happening that's not a, a unique situation, we are not supposed to give variances. And a lot of these, and, and in all but I think one, I voted, I voted no, even the ones that were approved. It was not that I didn't feel like that it was appropriate to build on the property, it was that I felt the Board of Zoning Appeals did not have the authority to do it because of that clause. And I'll say something else. In the, the book, which, well, the book is titled, "The Board of, The Zoning Board Manual" by Frederick Baer, which is the textbook, one of the textbooks that's used in the BZA certification course that the city sent me to. On page 33 of that, it quotes that exact phrase regarding, um, the not being in a general recurring nature. And then it follows that with, "In such cases, the Secretary of the Board shall take steps to initiate consideration of such an amendment." So in other words, they're saying, if you, if this is repeated over and over, you shouldn't give the variance, but we should be going to the legislative authorities to make an amendment to the, to the, um, to the zoning ordinance. So that's, and that's been the reason, I can only speak for my vote, but that's been the reason for my no votes consistently, is because I didn't feel like we have the authority. And the other thing, if we decide that every one of these that comes along, we're going to, we're going to give the variance, in effect, the Board of Zoning Appeals is changing the zoning ordinance, and I don't think we have the authority to change the zoning ordinance. That belongs to you guys and the City Council. So that's where I stand, and if any of my other, um, members.
Well, we're still friends, Brian.
We are still, we are, we are still friends, and we have voted on opposite sides of this, but we, we just have a difference of opinion on the, the code, but I'll let Ms. Boone speak.
Well, we don't have a difference of opinion on what the objective is, but when I look at these statistics, and I really appreciate being supplied with these, you can see that denial/approval rate, it's almost the same. You have like six denials, and you have five approvals, and then you have some that were denied or approved with condition. And I, I've only been on the board maybe four or five meetings, five meetings at max, so I don't have the experience that most of these people have. But the thing that I've noticed is that, and a thing that I think is always true, is we always have citizens on these boards, so they can represent not just statistics, but the people in the community. And one of the reasons that you have this diversity is that this is an issue that is always going to be fact, in my opinion, fact-based, not statistically-based, but fact-based. It's got to be based upon how it's going to affect the neighborhood, how it's going to affect the adjacent property. And number two of, of those points that you issued was that it will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property. And I think that, that is something that has been the primary factor in why so many of these have been denied, is that we, we, these are neighborhoods that people were very old people, very elderly people in it. The property that's going to be adjacent to the new property is probably not as substantial as the new property. There are a lot of issues about assessment, too, pipes and things that were built even before we were born. And those are why you have this, this split like this, because this is a fact-based issue, not a statistically-based issue, and you have to consider each one as they come, which can be tedious. But I think that it's integral to, to the board that we base it on fact rather than statistics. And as it relates to, um, changing the variance, well, I think that it's within the discretion of the board to do what we do as it relates to variance. That's just my opinion, you know, a thousand people have a thousand different interpretation of laws and regs, but I believe that we have like a legislative discretion to make the kinds of decisions that we're going to make. The only problem that I see with these types of decisions is that you're really going to have to have some basis, you know? Very seldom do, does the committee state the basis for denial and approval, to have an argument and then have a vote. The only, the only problem with that, in my opinion, and I'm a neophyte here, the only problem is that these decisions are appealable, as you probably know. And so we make a record of every meeting that we have, and you take some of these inconsistencies on an appeal, they're going to look at that record, and they're going to say, this one was denied, and this one was approved. Why was this one denied? Well, we know, we know because it was fact-based. And so I'm saying to you that if we continue, we need to indicate in the record the fact upon which the denial was based, and the fact upon which the approval was based, to protect the board against any appeals. I don't know if you ever had any appeals, but should you in the future have any appeals. And as I said before, um, I just think that that's, this is just a responsibility of the board. It's one of the more difficult ones, but it's a responsibility of the board. That's why you have citizens on the board, to represent the citizens, not just to say, well, statistics tell us that you can only go three feet and so forth. We have to look at each case individually and make a decision. And that's my opinion.
And if, and if I might add something to that, and I hope we're still friends after this. She mentioned that deciding cases based on the, um, the surrounding neighborhood, whether it's good for the neighborhood and so forth, and, and those type of facts, and she mentioned that, um, I forget exactly how you said it, but legislative type of function. Well, when the Board of Zoning Appeals reviews variances, that is, um, is referred to as a quasi-judicial function. We're supposed to be interpreting the law, not, and not looking at the facts of the situation surrounding that particular property. Now, if instead of reviewing these as variances, we, we, the, the code was changed so that we reviewed them as special exceptions, that's a legislative function of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and we could take into consideration those facts. So, um, that would be my response to that.
Let me say this, if it's a quasi-judicial, then, you know, the term quasi means that it's not a complete judicial function. And I, I was an administrative law judge for a number of years, and I can tell you that we base decisions on facts. And so facts should always come into consideration of the final decision. That, that's just my opinion. And I, I just think that this is what we have here. It's, it's always going to have to be, to a certain extent, fact-based, not statistically-based. And I, the odd thing is that when you look at your stacks, that's what you, you've been doing, basically, looking at each fact, and that's why you have such a diversity. It's very tedious. It's very tedious. I mean, I've only been to five meetings, and it's, it's very tedious to listen to each of those contractors come forward and present their case, and sometimes it's adversarial. But that's what we're here for.
Well, and I guess my, my thought on that would be that the way we've been doing it, obviously, we've had some approval, some denials for various reasons, and sometimes it depends on, um, how good a presentation the person makes, or sometimes it depends on the particular board members that, that happened to be at that meeting. And I think it should be more, it should be specified in the code so that there's consistency. The, the developers should be able to be able to look at the code and know what they can do and what they can't do, not based on the whims of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Well, I think.
And, and I, I, I follow what you're saying, I do, but I think it should be more specific in terms of when it can be done, when it can't be done, what the requirements are and so forth, so that, um, they don't, they're not buying a piece of property and then not knowing whether they're going to be able to get a variance for it.
Ms. Adamo.
I've been associated with a department for over 30 years with various planning directors, and each of them were aware of the fact that we had these non-conforming lots, and there have been various approaches. One, one of the approaches was if you had two non-conforming lots, you were required to do a lot merger and merge those lots. So we stopped that. Then we have the lot averaging. But, and each director chose to have the Board of Zoning Appeals make the decisions on variances, because we want citizens to review those requests. We could easily do it, we could change the code, we can do it all, but we want a citizen board to review those requests. I mean, I thought it was more appropriate to have the citizen board close to having a amendment that says, reduce it to three, reduce it to five, and by, and by right, you can do that. We wanted citizens to look at the community, to, to look, to see if what they requested made sense and was it doable. And as for how close you can go, I did speak to the, both the building official and the assistant building official, and they were saying that, you know, if you go a five or less, then there are requirements, file requirements, no one does special escape routes and things like that. So when you look at your, your, your variance, you look at the community and make a decision, we wanted the citizens to do that, not stand. Now, we don't want, can't do it, but it's always best when you have a board of citizens reviewing those requests. And that's why after three or four directors, they always decided to, no, not, not, don't let us do it, let's let the citizens do it. And then the code clearly says that variances ought to be determined by the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So, I think I've been on, I'm like the middle of the road as a member of the committee. Um, Mr. Gunn's been along for a while, Mr. Bunty's been around, back and forth. But I live in West Parkview, and I see what the smaller lots have done, and what challenges have been happening. I also work at the shipyard, so I see the neighborhoods that I drive through to get to work, and you have so many lots that are just left, and they're empty, or, um, like Mr. Bunty mentioned, there's just junk cars there, or trash. Come Tuesday of the week, you go down Elm Street, and you see the sheer number of trash. So when I come into these hearings, and what you said about being a citizen, and I want to be there to help, I listen to the, um, the whole surroundings. If I hear a neighborhood that's just, hey, we're getting destroyed by the construction, we're getting priced out of our own neighborhood, you know? Mr. Gunn brought that up. Those are the things that we have to listen to. However, there also needs to be some parameters where, which goes with what Mr. Bunty's asking for, some guidelines for us and the developers. So two months ago, we had the meeting where I think we denied just about everything. And it was anywhere from, you didn't see a financial trouble, the house next door was built basically on the lot line, um, the construction of the house didn't conform with the neighborhood. So there were a lot of things that we have to take into consideration, that I think we need a little bit more of bumpers, I'll call them. You know, where can we make the call versus you all make the call? Because that's, when you have a meeting where everybody comes in thinking they're going to automatically get down to three feet, I mean, holy moly, I mean, the one we had where we can't access our pipes if you give that guy three feet next door. And, you know, we'll go by and we'll look at it, but I don't, I will say, I don't get out and I don't walk every lot when I drive by and I look at it. So I wouldn't have known, those are water pipes coming down the side of the house that are active, you know? So one of the things that I really would appreciate out of this is maybe a bumper or turn lanes that we can use, you know? Hey, decision points, where we get to a point, where do we have to say no? Or where do you, or, um, the zoning committee or zoning staff be able to say, hey, you're within this, but we're going to still need you to come, and maybe that's a special exception discussion, we're still going to need you to get approved by the committee for the citizen approval portion. But we need a little bit more guidelines, because, and it goes back to what you just said, your sales pitch might be a heck of a lot better. You know, how many people were in the room that day? You know, we can have up to seven people, we can have four people, or five people. So it really depends, and we're citizens, we all have different opinions. You know, I can tell you, if somebody bought the lot two months ago and comes in and says, hey, I want to make a change, I'm probably not going to look as positive to it as somebody who's had that property for 10, 15 years before the zoning rules changed. So that's one of the other considerations we have to take in, is '22, we made all these prop, zoning changes, which impacted people that own these lots. And in some cases, if I bought my lot in 2019, had to spend a few years making some money, saving up so I can build a lot, now I come in and I'm like, holy moly, I can't build the house I thought with the previous zoning, how do we address that? And I think in most cases, I voted, unless there's extreme neighborhood distress about the house, if they own the house prior to the last change, I'm going to be a little bit more understanding, or the lot, a little more understanding than I would be of somebody who, back in February, went and bought three lots in a neighborhood, three different lots, thinking that they were going to be able to come in and build $287,000 homes, and cram into a, in Brighton. That's a little bit harder for me to vote for, because the residents of that neighborhood aren't going to pay $287,000 for a house. It's people that are moving from outside of the community into the community. So I'm a little bit of a cross between Ms. Boone and Mr. Bunty. I'm one of the newer citizens in the neighborhood, I've only been here 10, 11 years, so I see it from a different perspective of, we need bumpers or gutters, alleys, something to give us a little bit of leeway, but also not making it where we're automatically the answer.
Do you want an administrative step, or you want guidelines?
I would say more of guidelines, or parameters that we can work within.
Commissioners.
Yeah, actually, I just have a question, I think probably of an attorney, if we have Ms. Ruenga, yes, looking right at you. Policies and ordinances nationally can be written where you can drive a truck through them, or sew a needle through it. Is there any sort of flexibility we can possibly give to where we don't mess with the intent of an ordinance, but give a little bit more leadway to the Board of Zoning Appeals here? Is that something maybe we can look at and then maybe report back, kind of thing?
The issue with that is that this is a state statute that talks about what the Board of Zoning Appeals is allowed to consider for a variance. So that is determined by the state, that's not our own code. The state allows administrative staff, if there's an ordinance that, that grants them the ability, it would allow administrative staff to take over essentially variances, and then go to the BZAs and appeal appeals. go to the BZAs and appeal process. But that's the only thing I can think of offhand that would allow something, right, that would allow that. But otherwise, it's pretty set by the state. I mean, we can look into policies that, the BZA might come up with its own set of how they will interpret the state code, and I mean, that could be done on their own.
That's what I'm actually reading and asking is for you to look at it from a standpoint of, okay, I took this state code and where we talk about an exception versus a variance, can you start looking at them in that light versus a variance? You know, can we figure out a way to give that a little bit more of that, A, flexibility, B, guidance, I guess, one versus the other? And then maybe the thought process would be to change the ordinance to three and then have those exceptions above and beyond that to go, or variances to go to the board after that. Make it more of an administrative task with an appeal right to the BCA from there.
So is your request to have staff look into the various options and then come back to you at a later meeting?
That would be kind of what I would lean towards because I think we need to address this concern that it was brought to us and to council. And evidently enough council support prompted this work session. So, and actually, at the end of the day, we all work for council. So, you know, I think it would be wise for us maybe to at least look at some options, maybe.
Commissioner Coleman, did you have a question?
I just had a statement to follow up. Planning Commission has so much interplay on the Board of Zoning Appeals. You've got very strict guidelines. And I think, other than what the attorney may be able to help us with, with those decisions in certain cases, if, you know, like a flow chart, if it's this, then you can go here. If it's this, then you can go here. But as far as the chairman was saying, that you've got those specific parameters that it shouldn't matter how many people come out, you know, in a neighborhood to influence what the law says that you need or not need to do. And that's the hard part of being on the Board of Zoning Appeals, is telling, you know, 15 people when they, when they, you know, say that they don't have a problem with it, denying it. So that's the parameters that, and I agree more with the chairman and also Ms. Boone, that following the law, I don't know, it's very hairy and if there is something that, but I don't know what can be done.
I have a question. What do you estimate, Bunting, Chairman Bunting, how many lots are you estimating?
I did a very unscientific, rough count.
Ballpark.
Ballpark. And let me see if I can find it. I came up, I counted about 650.
That are currently vacant?
No, not that are currently vacant. What I did, and the only access to information I had was the tax maps that are on the assessor's website. So I looked at Prentice Park, for instance, and I forget how many tax maps cover Prentice Park, it's like six or eight of them, and went through and looked at the ones that are the original 25-foot size and just counted those lots. I don't know whether there's a house on them. I don't know whether they're owned by the one next door, by the same person or by a related company. So a lot of those that I counted are going to have houses on them already, you know, that may never come up. And there are probably some in other parts of the city that I didn't count. So like I say, it was an unscientific count, but I counted 650 lots between Prentice Park, Mount Herman, Brighton, Ebony Heights, and West Parkview. So that's, but, you know, like I say, I don't know the situation with any of those lots. I just know that they're still the size that they were originally platted as single lots.
Commissioners, anything else?
I just have one final question for Ms. Adamois. You said it becomes building, building code problems when they're inside of five feet, correct? So maybe that's something we may want to circle in on if we go from seven, go from seven to any number, maybe we want to make sure we're inside or outside of that five-foot range.
Well, you know, they receive the building plan, so they would know when to institute that requirement. You need to do firewalls and all of that.
Right, but maybe we can let the administrative handle till five to where y'all won't see as many, but you can concentrate on the few, maybe, you know, because I can imagine seeing in April, they saw one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, yeah.
Six cases, of which some were approved and some were not. And, you know, of anything I learned about law and the work that I do is consistency is key and consistency of decision is even more key. So I could see where that might be a problem for you guys at some point that, you know, I approved this guy going from seven to three, but I denied this one going from seven to five. You know, I can see that might be an issue if somebody wanted to press the issue of that decision. So maybe that's just something we look at as well, we bring those options back. Maybe that's something to keep in mind.
Yeah, Commissioner Coleman?
With those seven that were denied, those seven lots, those seven developers are going to sell them to seven other people because, or they're not going to pay them, and the treasurer's going to be able to sell them because the treasurer can sell them at tax, even if they're buildable or not buildable, it's still property. Or those seven developers who got denied are going to sell them to seven other suckers, you know, to, with the hope of them being built, and they're going to come right back to you. And I think that's where doing the due diligence of the property owners comes into effect was it a hardship, that's a sell hardship, like you said, if you bought it, you know, two months ago. So it's just a lot of cases, I think, that you guys are seeing. And it does put a bad taste in people's mouth when they're just buying it. And it's not buildable.
And if I might say something, one of the things that's been brought to our attention, and I don't know that it was specific cases that we had, but it's been brought to our attention that the city is selling a lot of these lots at tax sales. People don't realize that there's a big disconnect between departments of the city, so they think, okay, the city's selling this lot, it must be buildable. Well, the city's selling it to them, and then the other arm of the city says you can't build on it. So there's a disconnect there. Oh, I was going to say, in terms of the five foot, where we ran into one of these recently was the applicant was asking for three feet, which, or the setback down to three feet, and if the one next door was three feet, that wouldn't have been a problem. But the reference was to somebody that they claimed that they couldn't get their plumbing work done. Well, the problem there was that the house next door that's been there since 1910 or something was built right on the property line. So that situation probably needs to be taken into consideration that if you build, if you give this person three feet, the one next door might be zero or it might be over the line. So, and one other thing I'd just like to ask, and I'll go back to the part, the clause that I said in our requirements, that the condition, the situation of the property is not so general or recurring in nature as to make reasonably practical formulation of a general regulation. If 23 situations in a course of two and a half years is not recurring enough, how many do we have to have to have a recurring situation?
Well, that's an actual question.
That's an, that's, it's a question for anybody that wants to answer it, yes. And you would be a good one to answer that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's again, that would be ultimately up to a judge to determine. And there's a lot of factors that can go into it. I mean, off the cuff, that certainly sounds like a lot, particularly considering the number of lots in Portsmouth. But ultimately, that is kind of up to you all and to decide and council this stuff.
Right, okay. But the law says that if it's of that recurring, if it's a recurring nature, we're not supposed to grant variances. It says that specifically, well, 23 in two and a half years, that seems recurring to me. So that's.
But nobody knows what the definition.
But nobody knows the definition.
I was about to say, we don't know what recurring means. And if we didn't do those 23, what would the board be doing? You know, that, maybe that's what the board is supposed to do. So if we didn't have the 23, I can't imagine, you know, what other obligation the board would have to the citizens of the city. All of this is going to have to go on definition, definition by the planning commissioner and definition by this board as to what we consider to be recurring. I don't consider 23 recurring, really, I don't, because that's the, that's the job of this kind of board, to deal with those types of problems. And depending upon the nature of the city, where your city is and its growth process, you are going to get some issues that are going to keep coming before you 10 years from now. It may not be a recurring issue, but right now, it's a recurring issue, and I think we have a responsibility to address it. If we have 500 of them, we just need to address it in a fair manner. I mean, instead of, I disagree that decisions sometimes are whimsical. I have never seen a decision, but from any of my board members, that have been whimsical. They think it through and they give, I think, reasonable explanations regarding their decisions. There are no whimsical decisions being made by the citizen board, not that I can see. And I just wouldn't want that to go on record as saying, you know, because we have seven, it's more, it's less. It's not like that. It's not whimsical. But I do think, and I will stand behind this, if you change it to another number, you're going to still have the same problem. I mean, it is a problem that you have to deal with in another way. And you have to just consider the fact that each case is different. Each citizen is different, each request is different, and you have to deal with it on a factual, one-by-one basis. If it takes you from one minute to 30 hours sitting on a board to make sure that it took up fair determination, not the number that you have is the determination, it's the fairness that you're able to give to each one of those 23 that you should be considering, in my opinion. But, you know, I just want to go on record as saying, I don't think they've made whimsical decisions. I know mine hasn't been, and I don't think anybody else's that I've come in contact with has been whimsical. It's been tiring, and sometimes the process becomes too adversarial, I'll say that. And that, and that sometimes can break down people, and that may be something that should be dealt with. But I don't think it's recurring. I think it's what the board does.
Okay, thank you.
And I would agree, even though we have voted on opposite sides.
All the time.
And I didn't mean to imply that anything was done on a whim by anybody. I believe Ms. Boone takes her decisions absolutely seriously, as I do, Mr. Gunn and Ms. LaRue and all the other board members. I didn't mean, if I said anything that made it sound like our decisions were made on a whim, I didn't, I didn't mean that by any means, so I don't want to.
And I'll just say, my colleagues, I think, have presented everything that we have discussed before. And one last comment is that many times, it's the same developer that's coming through and has, we may have approved at one time and disapproved at another based upon the dialogue that was presented and how well it was presented and whether or not the neighbors agreed to it, whether or not we could have easy access for emergency vehicles, things like that that we make our decision on. But, and again, many times, it's the same, one or two of the same developer coming in who was granted on one street on Lindsay or may have been denied on Graham or something like that.
Right.
Just my comment.
All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioners, any additional questions?
Well, if I could just add one last comment. If you were to move that to five foot, it would remove nine off of this chart, which then does that become more general in nature in your, in interpretation at that point? Because then you're only reducing it almost by half over two, over two-year span. I think that would be taking it away from being so general in nature as you're describing in state code, that might free your hands up a little bit. Just another option or a thought. Seven to five was listed nine times out of the 23. So that may help solve some of the so general in nature concerns that this, some of the board members may have here.
Thank you. BZA, is there anything else? If not.
I don't have anything.
BZA, you will need to adjourn your meeting.
I'm sorry?
You will need to adjourn.
Oh, okay. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the July 18th, 2023 Planning Commission Work Session. Ms. Adamois?
Yes, again, we have only one case today, and Ms. Amy Murvine will.
Kind of stay up.
I'm going to be open. I'm going to say the interviewer will elaborate on that case.
Awesome. All right. Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. I am Amy Murvine, Senior Planner with the City of Portsmouth. Is everybody good? Can everybody hear me fine?
A little louder.
Louder? I got you. I'll bring my outdoor voice. I know the fans are kind of loud. All right. This use permit application request before you today is to operate a child day center on an approximate 1.75 acre parcel.
Okay, totally. Excuse me.
No worries.
Be open, that's the law. Need to be quiet. That's the law.
No worries. At 670 Lincoln Street in Suite 664. The property is located in the downtown special district, D1 SD zoning sub-districts. I'm sorry. The building was constructed in 1953, has multiple suites, and contains approximately 22,000 square feet of floor space. The applicant proposes to utilize Suite 664, which contains 7,867 square feet for a child day center use. The building was previously occupied by the Hampton Roads Community Health Center, a restaurant, arcade, barber shop, and other commercial type land uses. The parcel abuts 7th Street, Lincoln Street, and Green Street. The surrounding area consists of commercial, residential, and industrial type land uses. To the east of the subject property across 7th Street is an industrial, commercial type land use, Zone D1 SD. To the west, across Green Street, is vacant land, followed by a convenience store with gasoline sales, Zoned General Mixed Use, GMU. To the north is vacant land in a government office building, Zone D1 SD, followed by Randolph Street. To the south, across Lincoln Street, are detached, single-family residences, Zoned Multifamily Urban Residential, URM. The applicant's proposal is to utilize Suite 664 at 670 Lincoln Street to operate a child day center called Gentle Touch Learning Center. The space was formerly utilized as the Hampton Roads Community Health Center. A proposed 2,500-square-foot playground area is proposed adjoining the building within a portion of the existing parking lot, as noted in blue on the conceptual area plan. Gentle Touch Learning Center is proposing to provide a learning center operating Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. with 120 children, ranging from 12 weeks of age up to 12 years old. Staffing will consist of 16 to 20 employees. The child day center use specific standards within the zoning ordinance requires an outdoor play area. The play area is proposed to be placed on top of the existing asphalt. No land disturbance is proposed at this time. The applicant is proposing to open eight walls, remove two countertop desk spaces, and provide a kitchen area, as noted in the application and the conceptual floor plan shown here. The subject property is located within the Abex Superfund Site. From 1928 to 1978, the Abex Corporation Railroad Products Group operated a brass and bronze foundry nearby. Lead contaminated soil was found in a number of adjacent properties. In 1990, the Environmental Protection Agency, or the EPA, added the site to the National Priorities List as the Abex Corporation Superfund Site. Priorities List as the ABEX Corporation Superfund Site. Following extensive cleanup efforts, the remediation was declared complete by the EPA in 2009. Any proposed development shall be in compliance with the prescribed EPA regulations for this Superfund Site, as well as City Code Section 11, Article 2, excavation requirements for ABEX Superfund Site. No land disturbance is proposed by the applicant at this time. Staff has requested site-specific guidance for a child day center use located in the ABEX Superfund Site at 670 Lincoln Street from the EPA to clearly understand any possible impacts to children that will be serviced at the facility. At this time, staff has not received the requested information, but the EPA submitted a preliminary response in preparation of this meeting. And I will just, I'll read what basically was passed around to all of you. "EPA does not generally comment on reuse as long as it conforms with any existing restrictions or potentially negatively impact a remedy. The property in question is located on the ABEX Superfund Site, which has lead as a primary contaminant. The remaining lead is contained below a warning layer. It would be imperative that the City of Portsmouth work with the EPA's Children's Health and Lead Programs if this new use is something the city feels strongly about. The local health department could also be involved and have participated in previous ABEX activities. Obviously, children's lead exposure should be kept to a minimum and eliminated completely when possible. EPA understands the need for daycare in urban areas and wants to continue to help the City of Portsmouth redevelop this parcel. I will forward a more formal response with a scientific review as soon as I receive it." End quote. Staff contacted the Portsmouth Health Department for any records, and I received a response saying that no records were on file for the property. The property is designated on the future land use map of the Comprehensive Plan for Mixed-Use Employment. Staff recommends denial of the applicant's use permit request. Although no land disturbance is proposed and the use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, without the additional site-specific guidance from the EPA regarding the appropriateness of conducting a child day center use that will result in children being present on the property for multiple hours per day, staff recommends denial of this request. To my knowledge, no public comments were received regarding this application. I will now stand by for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Coleman?
Thank you. A couple of things you mentioned regarding the playground area. You said that it would be fenced off in the parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, so there will be no...
New space?
I guess there has to be, yeah, like some kind of bulk or green space or sand or anything?
So in our, the current child day center use-specific standards don't include that. The only thing it does mention, outdoor players, yep, that it has to be completely enclosed with at least a three-and-a-half-foot fence segregated from parking-loading service areas and not operated for outdoor play activities after 6:00 p.m. The state code for child day centers, they have their own standards on providing some sort of like fall layer. So I think it kind of depends on how high the play area is going to be, and then they have to probably do some sort of calculation on how much like either padding, you know, have you seen the rubber stuff?
Okay.
So they're going to have to do something with that, but that's through the state, not through us.
Okay, so if they choose to have higher equipment, it would be then guideline by the state?
I assume that's probably how they calculate it. I'm not sure how they do it. I just...
That makes sense.
That's my assumption.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Excuse me. You can throw the question to the applicant.
I will. Thank you. Thank you. That was good to know.
Commissioner Hines, anything?
I have a question. So in this letter from EPA, it says the remaining lead is contained below a warning layer. This was built in 1953. When was the lead contaminant discovered? In the 80s, 90s?
I think it was the 80s. I'm not, I don't remember. I tried to read the report, but...
So I guess what I'm thinking is, how can there be a warning layer below it if the building was put in in the 50s and...
Yeah, so that's why we requested the site-specific information. As I read through the EPA's report, it kind of, based off my interpretation of reading it, that anything that was already built or any impervious cover, that they didn't go under and clean up that. It was only for the residential properties. The industrial, already commercial properties like that, they didn't go under and like clean out the soil. So there may not be cleanup under that building.
They almost do like asbestos, like if it's already encapsulated and not disturbed?
Yeah.
It's not considered...
Okay. So that's what we're hoping, then?
A challenge, as long as you don't go and disturb that area that's already existing, it's not required for cleanup.
So was the site, I'm sorry, so was the site cleaned up to meet commercial and industrial standards only, or did it include residential as well?
For this one, I believe it was just for the commercial-industrial, because this didn't, when I did some research, it wasn't residential around that time.
I know, but if you read their documents, their definition of residential, right, Ms. Murvine?
They do have different definitions from what, and that's one of the reasons why, because, you know, our zoning ordinance considers a child day center use separate from like, because they only do it as, I believe, residential, commercial, industrial. They don't differentiate with specific uses as we do.
Right.
So that's why I was hoping the site-specific information, the guidance they could provide would help us out a little bit in making a determination.
Man.
Commissioner Coleman, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. Do you know how long the EPA estimates, estimates that they would have this?
Yeah. We were hoping about a week or two ago, and I, from what she had kind of implied, that it's just kind of been kind of backlogged with them and that she's still trying to get the information from the toxicologist.
But their preliminary recommendation is that, exactly what she said in here?
Yep. That was just her preliminary response until she gets the information from the toxicologist.
Sure, nothing site-specific?
Yep, no.
Thank you.
You're from...
Anything else, Commissioners? No?
No, ma'am.
No. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Murvine.
Your what?
Ms. Adamois, is there anything else?
None.
Okay. Commissioners, unless there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, July 18, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chairman. I will now confirm that all the members of the Planning Commission are present by calling the roll. Commissioners, when I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Barnes, Commissioner Curry...
Present.
Commissioner Jiggett, Commissioner Thaxton...
Here.
Commissioner Coleman...
Here.
Commissioner Page, Commissioner Hines...
Present.
Four members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the June 6, 2023 public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 6 Planning Commission meeting. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry...
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton...
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman...
Yes.
Commissioner Hines...
Yes.
The minutes are approved by a vote of four to zero. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, August 1, 2023, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Chamber, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their August 8, 2023 public hearing, or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cell phone at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item, UP-23-12 Downtown. Towana Freiter with Gentle Touch Learning Center LLC requests a use permit to operate a child daycare, a child day center on the approximately 1.75 acres located at 670 Lincoln Street in the Downtown Special District, zoning district. The future land use map of the Build 1 Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for mixed-use employment. The property is owned by the Runny Mead Corporation and is further described as Tax Map 33, Parcel 79. The staff coordinator is Amy Murvine. Will, this application was deferred from the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission public hearing. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Towana Freiter. I'm the Director of Gentle Touch Learning Center and owner. I've been teaching Portsmouth Public Schools for the past 14 years and have been operating childcare center for the past eight years in Portsmouth. We are currently proposing to place a childcare center at 664 Lincoln Street, where the Hampton Roads Health Center was once operated. After my meeting with the City's zoning department, I was informed that the site is located in a D1 SD sub-district. This made me aware that there are some health and safety issues that I will need to put in place before considering putting a childcare facility in that location. I myself have lived in Portst- Apprentice neighborhood for the first 12 years of living in Portsmouth and understand how hard it is to find childcare center close to home. Currently, there aren't any licensed childcare center located in the South Side neighborhood of Portsmouth. Our hours of operation would be 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The center will admit children from the ages of 12 weeks up to 12 years old. We propose having a total of 120 children with a team of 16 to 20 teachers. Currently, our center on Turnpike Road is at part of the Virginia Quality Birth Through Five program, which implement by Eastern Virginia Medical School, and we are also a part of the cohorts of childcare centers that are implementing these curriculum stream in three that is offered by the Center of Advanced Studies of Teaching and Learning at the University of Virginia as a curriculum option offered through a partnership with the Virginia Department of Education. As a childcare, early childcare and education provider, we are, we would like to the opportunity to implement the same program in the South Side neighborhood. Studies have shown that children who receive and approve preschool curriculum education are more likely to form better habits of going to school regularly and are ready for the kindergarten curriculum. Currently, our school system struggles with chronic absentees, and having a program that is close to home that gives parents the convenience of dropping off their child at the center before taking the bus to work would be helpful. Our students who are in the public school system receive assistance with homework and along with tutoring. We also have a summer camp readiness program for our school-age students to prepare them for the next grade level. The property is within the ABEX Superfund Site. Lead contamination soil was found on this property, however, the part that we would be using for the playground area would be fenced around on a tar, with tar, there will be no actual opportunity for children to dig into the soil. The ABEX readiness report from 2022 on page 14 and 16 and 19 and 50 have decided that we would use the paved driveway where the health clinic once parked its mobile bus for our playground along the chain link fence. By fencing along the green area beside the parking lot, this will ensure that there is no possible way for a child to get in contact with the contaminated soil. We are also open to suggestions for placing playground at different location. Gentle Touch Learning Center will follow the guidelines set by the city for operating a childcare center in the floor plans we've already located where we would have removed walls and also place a kitchen that was already in use. We also will be in contact with the fire department, environmental health services, the engineering department. We are also working closely with Charles Hall, PJ Director of the Environmental Science, to ensure that all necessary safeguards are put in place to protect as the well-being of the children will be in place in our care. He will be testing for lead and asbestos in the building, along with making sure we are following the guidelines with creating a playground for the children. We received a staff report from the planning department last week. Most of their conditions we already were going to put implemented. There are others as well that we plan to implement because the safety of the children is our number-one priority. In our facility, children are consistently monitored and while supervised on the playground, being fenced around will not give them the opportunity to dig into soil, seeing that the soil will be covered with pavement and also a grasser. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Freiter. Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Coleman?
Hi, Ms. Freiter. How are you?
Okay.
I had a question regarding the use of playground. I understand with it not being a, in the grass. I had a question earlier in the public hearing regarding that. Can you tell me what type of playground equipment? Is it going to be low to the ground or...
Well, currently, we do not, I do not do playground equipments, even at my other facility, because we've noticed studies kids normally stand around for those equipments instead of going out and playing. So we normally take our toys outside and the kids are normally interacting that way. So there will not be a playground swing or anything that's going to be nailed onto the ground.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Curry, did you have a question? Commissioners, no questions?
I do have one more question, and I'm not, I'm not sure that this is to you. But are there going to be, with the improvements that you're making, I saw that you had contracted the MSE Engineering Company, they're a great firm. Will there be required any special inspections beyond something that our building permit, has the building official indicated to you that there would have to be any special permits or special inspections?
Well, for any childcare center that is, the building has been built before 1980, we always have to do a lead and asbestos test. Also, we do get inspected by the state. They come in and inspect this facility before we can get approved. So those are the different tests that's available for us at this point and the inspections. We also get inspected by the health department, fire department.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Freiter, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So you just mentioned that they, there would be a lead-based paint done and asbestos completed.
Correct.
What about air testing?
Well, seeing that before we start doing any demolishing, the asbestos person will actually test the air to make sure there isn't any particles there.
And afterward?
And they'll also test after the construction.
Okay.
Because before they can actually do construction, they have to test if there's asbestos in the wall that they're knocking down.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Hines?
Ms. Freiter, thank you for wanting to invest in our community and our children. You're 100% right about pre-K. If we want to have a better school system, a better community, we need to invest in that. So you're 100% right. I'm familiar with your Streamin' 3 program. So, yeah, it's a great program. So hats off to you on that. I guess I still have some concern myself about the EPA and a final determination for the site suitability for the children. So I have more of a comment, I guess, than a question here, is naturally, I am grateful for you wanting to invest and to do that, and I think we should do everything we possibly can while also limiting the liability of both yourself and the city as a whole in regards to that. So I think it would be prudent of us to see if we can get, you know, some additional guidance from the EPA on this application. That's just my personal opinion, but I wanted to take a moment of personal privilege to thank you and, you know, possibly even allow us to take that, you know, extra step to protect everybody involved. extra step to protect everybody involved because we certainly don't want to do anything to, to impact our children. But again, thank you for that. It sounds like you got a great plan. Sounds like you, you know, when you're doing your, you know, build outs, you have an understanding of asbestos and those types of things. The minute you just, you know, disturb it, you have to have the before and the after tests. So I, I feel that you have a good handle on, you know, the construction and the challenges, not only the site, the site provides, but also the building. So I do want to, you know, thank you for having that together, but I, you know, I'm kind of opinion that we should maybe wait to see if the EPA does give us some sort of site-specific guidance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Freiter. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-23-12. I have no registered speakers. If there's someone here who would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will be given up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? Commissioner Curry?
So are we, the council, the board, are we waiting? Because this has been pushed back from the last meeting. So are we saying we want to wait for further, to defer it again?
You can make a motion to defer if you would like.
Actually, I was going to ask the attorney, is this in a, getting a site-specific determination from the EPA, a item that we can potentially add into our conditions before it goes to city council for approval? Is that kind of in our playbook or? Yes, I was thinking of giving, offering an approval, but, you know, with a condition that we get, you know, some sort of site-specific approval from the EPA as a condition. Is that possible for us?
Ma'am, I hate to interrupt you, but could you speak louder so she can hear you?
You can cut the microphone.
Thank you.
And cut it on.
Cut it on. Thank you so much.
Right in front of you. There you go. Thank you.
Should I start over?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I can't say whether the EPA in their site-specific report will say, yes, this is something that we approve or no, we will not. It's quite possible that they'll give data, they'll give some sort of general suggestions, but they might not say yes or no. So if that's what you are looking for in the site-specific report, that's, might not be what you'll get.
Thank you. I would like to make a suggestion that we, or a motion that we defer this application for 60 days to allow them to possibly receive the information that they're looking for from the EPA and for us to have an opportunity to be more prepared to ask additional questions once they do receive it.
Is that what the, the lady, young lady here, is she? Could you come back up for?
Ms. Freiter.
Ms. Freiter. How long have you been in this process?
Well, we started this process in April.
And, and so you're, you're waiting on more inspections to come through now?
We're basically go ahead from the commission to say, yes, we can go ahead with a childcare center before we move any further.
Okay.
Commissioner Curry, if I may, they are waiting on some information, more substantive information from the Environmental Protection Agency. That's the reason that I made the motion to defer it for 60 days.
Do, do you have a deadline when they should be responding?
Well, again, we cannot do anything, so we don't have a deadline. We're basically waiting for the go-ahead because we already, I have the landlord here with me. We are basically waiting before we do anything else.
So you can't get anything from them until we make them?
I can't get anything from them until they give it to you guys. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Curry.
To approve it, if deferring it?
It, it would allow them to possibly receive what they're waiting on staff from the EPA because that's the reason that we need that information from the Environmental Protection. We're talking about children.
Got you.
So that's the reason for my motion.
Got you.
Commissioner Hines?
So I guess my question would be is if the guidance from the EPA may be more general in nature, and I think it even mentions in this email that the scientific review, do we have a contract or an employee, once this scientific review is complete, to maybe give us some sort of additional guidance? Is that something that we have in our portfolio to say, hey, yeah, the scientific review determined that, you know, our risk is minimal? Or it's, you know, through the roof, we shouldn't do kind of thing? Is that something that we have at, at the city level that maybe can provide that in addition to? Because I'd hate for us to defer this for 60 days. They give us a scientific review, nobody's really here to interpret that scientific review, and our applicant has waited 60 days.
Right.
You know, that's where my concern is, is if they don't give us site-specific, you know, item here, then do we have somebody that can interpret this data to give us maybe, you know, a, a better suggestion here?
Yeah, so I'll answer that. We don't have any specific staff designated to read scientific reports like that. In, I tell it my previous life, I used to review a lot of reports like that. I used to do asbestos and lead and a lot of other stuff. So I've looked at a lot of these reports, and a lot of times in these types of reports, they'll make a statement saying that XYZ contaminant or mineral is below the regulated, trying to think of the words, like the regulation.
Contaminated level.
Yeah. So it's, so when you look at some of that, like it depends on the, the contaminant too, but a lot of times it'll, they usually say, or it's like, oh, it was found above the recommended regulation limit, something like that. So I'm not sure what the EPA is going to provide, but I'm hoping that, you know, they're not just going to give us like a table full of information that'll actually have some body to it saying that, hey, this is under, under X limit, if that helps.
I can answer part of that. On their 2022 report, they, they show on the map that building area was in one of the lower levels of contamination, but for them to come back, they would have to dig again into the asphalt to test what the level is.
And we could also consult the health department too. And they had in the email said they would be willing to come to a council meeting to discuss the site, so there are other options.
That was the EPA. Yeah, the EPA told, since I was off last week, told Julie that they would be willing to come and speak at the city council meeting. If that helps.
If I may, Commissioners, the only reason that I suggested 60 days was more than once today, I have heard how they have been waiting on this information, and I just figured that 60 days would allow them enough time. Yes, I'm sorry, you know, it is going to put her back, but maybe it would allow these government entities to get the paperwork in that we need and someone that's qualified to review the information.
I, I'm not arguing the 60 days at all. I just want, I want to make sure that when the data is presented, whatever format they provided in, and I'm familiar with the, the mold test and the marine chemists of the world and things about nature, oftentimes they will not even offer what they consider an acceptable threshold. They compare it to levels of what is naturally occurring in said environment, and then you have to draw whatever conclusion you wish to draw. So I want to be able to have as much of a intelligent person to be able to look at that, that data, not so much just having the data. The data is great, but if you don't have somebody to discern said data, then it's, it's lost in the fact here. So I just want to make sure that when we do get what we get from them, whether that is, yes, it's appropriate, or no, or yes, it is, or nothing, and here's a huge table of, you know, 300 pages of report, like the EPA likes to write for this funds, for the site. I mean, I've read through a good number of them. It, it certainly don't, we don't want to bog it down any longer. I want to get to a yes for her because the truth is, is this is a needed service. But at the same time, I think there is, you know, it's a prudent step for all parties involved to be as cautious as we possibly can with this site, in my opinion. So I agree with the 60 days, for days, provided that we, you know, can know that we can do something with this data once we receive it.
Okay. So I'm going to clarify my motion. I make a motion that we defer UP-23-12 downtown for 60 days so that we are able to receive substantive information from the Environmental Protection Agency as it relates to this application, and we have someone that's able to interpret it properly.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I made the motion. He seconded it.
You want this September or October? October? 60 days?
60 days. August, September.
Okay. October.
I think September meeting would be sufficient.
How, what does that?
September. Would be sufficient.
So what is September's date? Ms. Adamois, does anyone have a calendar? Oh, okay.
So September is going to be, September the 4th, no, September the 5th will be our meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair, are you?
Can you come up here, sir?
My name is George.
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself?
Yes, my name is George Luizu.
Thank you.
And I just, I just inquired this property about a month ago, and I also inquired the Sheriff's Academy at the same time. So it's total four acres. So, you know, I'm here for the community and I have spoke to a lot of residents that they're excited that this shopping center has been revived for that community, and I'm more than glad to do whatever it takes to make this happen. But I'm not sure about records. When I did inquire it, we did have the EPA tested in '22, before I purchased the property in 2022, and they did find low level of whatever they, they said it was. It was very low. The other thing I was going to mention is since in the 80s, the, the academy has been there for almost 20, 25 years, and they have been using the grass area for training their staff for almost 25 years now. And I don't know if that's a regular, but I see them on the ground doing their training for, for this long, and I don't know if anybody had any issues using that grass area for the past 25 years, training their, their staff. So, and I know, you know, we're trying so hard to get this done since April. So is it possible that we can move the play area right closer to the entrance and maybe add additional two, three inches of layer of paving in that area where we can raise up the level where they, they're not going to have anywhere contact with the grass area if we move it closer to the middle of the shopping center? So that's just an idea because if we keep, try to keep it away from the grass, if we leave it right by their door and make a play area right closer to the, the daycare center, it would be possible. And maybe we can raise the asphalt area another three inches. That will put seven inches before you get to any gravel or ground for that specific area.
Yes, sir.
So that's just an idea.
Thank you very much, Mr. Luizu. Hold on a second. Commissioner Chair, yeah, Commissioner Curry. Sorry.
This is a quick question. I'm going to prolong anything. So they do have report from the EPA from 2022?
No. He, as a purchaser of this property recently, probably as a result of due diligence, had a report done.
Got you.
However, that report belongs to him, and we need information from the environmental, because we don't know who conducted that previous report.
Thank you.
That's my understanding anyway.
Yes, I'd be more than glad to share it or, you know, have it, give you the report whenever you guys. I'm just not sure why it takes so long to get a report. So that's.
Mr., Commissioner Hines?
Yes, is it possible, maybe we can revise our motion yet again to a period of up to 60 days? And if he wants to provide that report and it meets the requirement of city staff to feel comfortable with said report, maybe that might be able to put it back in front of us close, you know, not in 60 days, but maybe in 30 days.
Yes, I would prefer that than keeping the 60 days and it's.
Hold on one second.
Just, just as an idea.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
One second. Mr. Hines, were you done?
Yes, I was just saying that might just be an idea to maybe expedite this process just slightly here for them.
Okay. Madam Secretary?
Our next meeting in 30, well, actually less than 30 days because this is actually our July 4th meeting. We can't, we couldn't do it, we couldn't hear it in August anyway. So September would definitely be the earliest. So really, you're, you're talking the 5th, you're talking the October meeting, not the September meeting. If you're talking 60 days.
Modify the motion?
Could we modify the motion for the September 5th meeting? That would get them closer to the 30 days and further than the 60 days to where we might just have a little bit more time to possibly provide and get the information we might feel a little more comfortable with, and then ask staff to get the information from the gentleman if he's willing to provide it. And if it is from a source we feel comfortable with to provide, you know, maybe a little bit more technical data and understanding of the site, I think that would be a prudent move for us.
Okay. Then Commissioners, I would like to modify my motion to UP-23-12, defer it to our September 5th, 2023 meeting to allow staff to receive Mr. Luizu's report that he had conducted on this parcel in 2022.
I'll second that.
Thank you. You okay with that?
Yeah. I would like, I'm going to vote, I'm going to vote, but I just want to say that, and I know the motion is to, to the extent that we feel comfortable, while I don't want Ms. Freiter to delay her any longer for this project, I am just a little uncomfortable saying that I might, you know, approve a report that wasn't specifically designated for a daycare like we're expecting to receive, but I am open to that. So I will be approving this vote, but I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luizu.
Okay.
Commissioner Hines?
May I ask just one additional piece, not from the applicant or the, but is it possible to have, you know, the health department or somebody that might have something to do with the, you know, with students or age, student age-appropriate persons that might be able to come and speak to this application in September or at least attempt? I know it's summertime. I know it's, it might be a difficult ask, but if we can maybe have that as well, that might be, you know, something that might make Commissioner Coleman feel better about the reporting that might be coming forth.
We can make the request. I can't guarantee it, but we would definitely make the request.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking. I know you can't guarantee anything. You can. You can request anything from any department head. And you may not get the exact answer you want there, but.
All right, hold on.
And.
Ms. Freiter, would you like to come back up here? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Luizou.
Yes. Um, he requested someone that child, I can have my, um.
Can you step up to the microphone, please?
My inspector from the social services. I could ask her to come to the meeting. So you may be able to ask more questions that has to do with childcare centers and the outdoor play area.
I, I think that would be appropriate, but I think, I think my main concern is, is the impact of the, of what's there on the site. But I think, I do think any additional information here is probably really helpful. Um, you know, and, and ability to make, you know, the best decision for our children, you know? So I, I, I would welcome that as well, but naturally defer, you know, to the will of the body.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Freiter. Commissioners, I made a motion. Commissioner Hines, second.
Have a motion then a second to defer UP dash twenty-three dash twelve to the September the fifth, twenty-twenty-three Planning Commission meeting to wait on a report for staff that was done by Mr. Luiza in, for Mr. Luiza in twenty-twenty-two. Motion then second. You can vote. Uh, roll call vote, sorry. Commissioners, as I call your name, please reply with a verbal response. Commissioner Curry?
Yes.
Commissioner Thaxton?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hines?
Yes.
This item is deferred by vote of four to zero to the September the fifth Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I believe this, that includes our agenda for today. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Commissioners, will there be any further business? Ms. Adamois, any further business?
No further business.
Thank you. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned.